Okay, we'll call the school board meeting to order. And we'll start with roll call. Tony Corby, absent. Emily McGonigal, absent. Bruce Rappelain.
Here.
Ted Saxton.
Here.
Roxanne Skiffstead Beach, here. Joanne Smith.
Here.
Jennifer Baker.
Here.
Kevin Grover.
Here.
Mitch Erickson. Okay, now let's stand for the next.
The allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, and next, we're going to have the Elks Student of the Month.
Can you approve the agenda just a second?
Oh, so, I understand. Could I have a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
So moved.
Second.
You got it?
Yep.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. And now we'll go to the Elks Student of the Month. Do you want to announce them?
Well, welcome to all. It is an honor to get the Student of the Month program going again. Just so the group is aware, typically it takes a little time to get going. That's why we're doing it in September now, to ask teachers to start nominating a week, week and a half. And not that they haven't had a lot of the kids, but that's kind of why we wait till the end of September, get some nominations, and then get October going at the same time. It is my honor for these two months, the four students that are chosen today, they're all about exactly the same as far as the schedule goes. When you hear the classes and stuff, I'm not going to say for many years they've probably been in the same classes, so it's going to be a little bit of a broken record. Obviously, it does change as the year goes on, and we get a variety of students to honor, but just forewarning a lot of it, it's not that I can't change the script, but they're the same stuff. They're great kids here. So, I'm going to start with September, and Ellen, come on. So, Ellen Windels is one of the Elks 1599 Students of the Month for September. Ellen is the daughter of Jennifer Baker and Steve Windels. Ellen has prepared herself well by taking numerous college and the school courses as a junior and senior at Falls High School. She had two years of CIS English, two years of social studies, and one year of college in the schools math. College anthropology, I believe, college P E health, college art, college biology, college sociology, lifelong chemistry and physics, and a couple of years of Spanish. And a leader for two years in the broadcasting and journalism class. Very impressive. Ellen has participated in producing the daily announcements, active with Knowledge Bowl and Student Council, MHS, CAPE, classroom aide at the elementary STEAM class, and in the library. She's employed at the public library, which is a perfect fit for someone who spends much of her free time reading. She enjoys cooking new meals and shares some of her bread with her dog. What was the name?
Artemis.
Artemis, okay. Her passion is learning about humans and their past, so she and a friend are working with the Koochiching Museum to create a documentary on International Falls' own history. Ms. Rudolph wrote Ellen is a fantastic student. Her work ethic is superb. She goes above and beyond with everything that she does. She is sweetly and humbly making her mark on this world. Ms. Hammers commented that Ellen is a leader in the classroom and numerous Falls High School extracurricular activities. She leads by examples when it comes to work ethic, intellect, and integrity. Ellen makes everyone in the room a better student and a better person. Ellen plans to study anthropology somewhere interesting. She hopes to maximize her travel, both her career as well as her personal life, and travel will influence where she goes after she gets her bachelor's degree for a postgraduate degree. Ellen Windels, Elks Student of the Month for September. Jacob. Jacob Clifford is the other Elks Lodge 1599 Student of the Month for September. Jacob is the son of Christie and Chris Clifford. Jacob has prepared himself well by taking numerous college and the school classes, both junior and senior year. He has two years of English. These are all college and the school classes. Two years of social studies, two years of math, then went on and took chemistry and physics, choir, and other courses to fill his schedule. You have very few open hours compared to some, which is very respective. Jacob is involved with the Koochiching Area Prevention and Education, the CAPE crew, and the activities that they participate in. He participates in speech, Knowledge Bowl, and was on the Knowledge Bowl team that went to state in place 13. Jacob is a baritone in the Falls High School Choir. Ms. Rudolph wrote that Jacob is a force in class. He is passionate about his studies and always strives for greatness in everything that he does. Outside of school, Jacob loves to read books, and one of his favorite being the Lord of the Rings trilogy. He may find some time to watch TV or play video games, along with occasionally going fishing, though he said he hasn't went in the last couple of weeks. After high school, Jacob plans to head to college out of state to major in fisheries or wildlife biology and become a fisheries scientist or a fisheries technician, with the hopes of leading a research team into the study of various fish. Jacob Clifford, Elks Student of the Month for September. Summer. Summer Hasseldahl is one of the Elks Lodge 1599 October Students of the Month. Summer is the daughter of Kendra, Kendra and Paul Bennett. Summer seized the college and the schools opportunity as well and took two years of English, two years of math, social studies, two years of social studies, and again, along with chemistry, physics, a couple of years of Spanish, and she's ready for the next chapter in her life. She participated in basketball and cross country through her junior year and was captain in cross country. She has been a member of the track and field team and plans to participate with them this spring. She is a member of the Koochiching Area Prevention and Education group since 7th grade, Minnesota Honors Society the past two years. When not in school, she enjoys family time, reading, playing card games, and cooking. Summer enjoys trying new recipes, be it cooking or baking, and said, "Who doesn't love to see which cookie is your favorite?" She also likes to get out in the boat during the summer. Ms. Hammers said Summer is a student that is always going above and beyond, both in and outside of the classroom, to make sure that she is pushing herself academically. Summer is prepared, engaged, responsible, and respectful in all areas of her life. Ms. Rudolph is quoted as saying that Summer has always been a very conscientious student. She works extremely hard and takes pride in her work. She is very involved in the extracurriculars, and that strong work ethic and passion makes her an excellent leader and great role model for future Broncos. Summer is a natural leader, and her tenacity for success will take her far. Summer plans to attend the University of Wisconsin Superior to get her bachelor's in exercise science. She hopes to be a member of the track and field team while at UWS. She plans to continue her education following her bachelor's degree to become a physical therapist. Summer Hasseldahl, Elks Student of the Month for October. Brayden Skiffstead is one of the... Let me start over. Brayden Skiffstead is the other Elks Lodge 1599 October Students of the Month. Brayden is the son of Nicky and Luke Skiffstead. Brayden seized the college and the school opportunity as well, took two years of English, two years of social studies, a year of math, a year of college business, along with chemistry and physics, and a couple of years of Spanish. Brayden is a three-sport athlete, participating in hockey, football, and track and field. Brayden is an active member of the Koochiching Area Prevention and Education group, is a member of the Minnesota Honors Society, serving in the role of president. Outside of school, Brayden enjoys cooking food on his own. He works on the weekends at Rainy Lake Grill as a cook. Mrs. Olson Line said Brayden is a natural leader. He is hardworking, self-motivated, and puts forth his best effort in everything that he does. Brayden has the ability to bring out the best in everyone and inspires everyone around him. Mrs. Hammers commented that Brayden is the epitome of what makes a role model in our high school. Brayden is a student athlete that strives for success in all areas of his life. Brayden makes good choices, is kind and respectful to all, and is welcoming to everyone he meets. Has a great work ethic, is personable, is an absolute joy in the classroom. Brayden plans to attend college in Minnesota to get a bachelor's degree in criminology with a minor in psychology, with the goal of becoming a lead investigator in Duluth. Brayden Skiffstead, Elks Student of the Month for October. Congratulations to all. Amazing poor individuals, so congratulations to parents as well. If we can take a pause?
Yeah, we'll take a pause.
Picture?
Okay, we will now resume our school board meeting, and we're going to skip down to the back page of our agenda, and ask Mitch Erickson to speak next since he has to leave early.
All right, thanks for moving me up. I have played practice, so thanks for letting me talk early. So, homecoming was in September there, and it went very well, and we'd like to thank everyone who helped out and all the chaperones who watched the dance and the bonfire. So, a big thank you to all those people, and homecoming overall was a great success this year, and I thought it worked very well. Student Council will be selling caramel apples, so from Swinkie Gifts on rainy, October 24th through the 28th, and apples will be delivered on October 31st during first hour. Students will be selling during A, B, and C lunch, and if anyone wants to buy one a little bit early, or they're going to be gone that week, Mrs. Blasky is accepting orders this week, so you can contact her. They are $9 an apple, but they're really good, so caramel apples, guys. We had our blood drive. There were 44 people donated blood. It was a great success, and we haven't had that in a couple of years. The blood drive was really happy with how many people we got, and 44 people, I think we can only have 45 people donate blood, so we had almost every position filled. So, it was really good, and thank you to everyone who donated blood. CAPE, we participated in the Walk to School Day with elementary students. That went well to promote just well-being and for young kids to show that there are good role models in the school, and the CAPE room is there for them when they come over from 5th grade. We're also doing a trick-or-treat for non-perishable food items for the food shelf on October 31st. We've added a drop-off location in the FHS front lobby, October 31st and November 1st, in case we miss people and they want to donate. So, we'll be going around neighborhoods and just collecting non-perishable food items for the food drop, food shelf, excuse me, and we'll have, and if you are interested in donating, or you have a couple cereal boxes or cans you want to give it up, you can drop them off in the front lobby on the 31st and the 1st of November. Student Council is also putting up a Halloween dress-up day competition on October 31st, and this is all for 6th through 12th graders. Teachers will vote, and the top costume of each grade will win a prize. We're just trying to promote some school spirit and get more people involved, and so they're just going to dress up for Halloween, following the school rules and everything, and make sure everything's followed there, and then each grade will receive a prize, and teachers will vote on that. And then, CAPE will be participating in the Halloween hallway on October 27th from 6:00 to 7:00 P.M. If you have any questions, any questions or comments, and if anyone has any ideas or they want to reach out to us, studentcouncil@ic361.org is our email, and that's all I have. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. The next thing on the agenda is public open forum, but I don't think we have any correct. Okay. All right. The next thing on our agenda is to approve the consent agenda as presented. Could I have a motion?
I'll move, Joanne.
Discussion?
Oh, second. Hold on a second.
Discussion?
Just a couple of comments, and a few people asked. Number six, the higher, Ms. Taylor is, has been a coach in the past. We did separate ways at one point. She has been volunteering with Voice Program on and off. Little interviewed and is recommended, and I will also put the recommendation forward. The, number nine, a concession agreement, just so the crew is aware, and I have no idea the history on this, I mean, rec hockey has done the concession area at Falls, at Bronco Arena for long as I'm aware of, but we do have a contract because they're in essence an outside group. They're not really a booster because rec hockey is an entity on school. So, somewhere along the line, there's been a charge. There's a $600 fee in there. At one point, it was a percentage, but it just got to be too hard to, and again, it's ballpark of what they got. So, just throwing it out there, we're recommending we go with it again. They are in essence part of the rec commission, and so it is our group of people in a sense, but for some reason, that one's had a charge, and I'm guessing it's because they're somewhat of an outside group, you know, like the baseball boosters that does the football games. They don't pay anything, you know, downstairs volleyball doesn't pay anything. And I'm just being honest, that's my only guess, to be honest. And then, the other, on number 10 and 11, those two contracts there, which I'm going to say for the most part, we don't have much choice. When we had our cyber attack, the insurance company set these two groups up. A good chunk of it will be paid by insurance, okay? But when we had the deal, hey, here's a group we need to go, and of course, we had to sign an agreement with them. So, it's from direction from our insurance. This was the group that we worked with. I'm told, and just giving you an update, that we will get the forensic results tomorrow, tomorrow or Wednesday. I put out some time that I'm available to where they're supposedly able to tell us what exactly happened, and book my balance, so we'll stay a little while, but that's where we're at.
Kevin, so the 5900 is the premium?
No, the 5900 is the, what they call threat act, threat actor communication. There's a group that actually communicates back and forth with people that took our information.
Yeah.
And that's their service. The second one was the investigation, which is the big piece of it. And again, it's all going to be part of the insurance group, okay?
Okay.
And there is, there's other costs that are covered.
So, we're going to repay a premium for our cyber insurance, and on top of it, we pay the 5900?
No, no, no. Both of those are two expenses that have been incurred that we're going to pay, and then our insurance in essence will pay us back a certain part. I mean, I'll just be honest, there's some fees with Skyward because we had to have them help us rebuild some of our, you know, Skyward software, you know, that again goes in. It's all like a car accident, you know? You might have a towing bill, you might have a repair bill, you might have, I don't know what else would come in, detailing or cleaning, you know? And so, it's all goes together as part of this incident. And like I say, depending on exactly what they find, you know, it'll cover a chunk of it, but we're going to pay a chunk of it. And I hate to say it, just like the fighter in the arena, get back. Insurance covers a chunk, but you don't come over, the cost, you know? I'm just being honest, you know? And so, luckily, gunwood, we haven't had any major, I mean, this is very minimal from the conversation today with the attorney, and if it doesn't go any further, and, you know, to have, they'll probably come in at about $150,000, you know, they're like, it's cheap because he can buy, you know? And part of it's because they caught it early on, and, you know?
Wait, now the $150,000 is?
It's the total bill probably right now, and then our insurance will cover two-thirds of it or something like that, you know, depending exactly how things roll out.
And then you'll tell us?
Over a million dollars.
Well, and that's what, it doesn't matter that we're small, you know? And again, you know, and my, who knows what they have to do, and when I say, you know, I'm very, Ted could probably talk more, but depending on what they find, if there's, you know, some notification that has to be done, there's a company that would help us do that, you know, if there was. And so, I mean, they're all costs, but it all can go into your insurance, and, but these two are ones that we had to approve from our attorney, get going, and so, like I say, we're bringing them after the fact to you, but we really don't have much choice.
And then, will you give us the information next month of the?
Whatever I can share with you.
Statistics, okay?
Yeah, yeah. So, anyway, that is the comments I have on the consent agenda.
Okay. We had a second. So, any other discussion? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. All right, action items. Improving, improving systems and structures to create a culture where all are welcome and supported. Do I have a ready comment?
So, maybe I should start because I've got a couple of questions. If you recall from our strategic plan, one of the things, and we'll get to this later, but there's four areas, and one of the recommendations was for our action items, to put each of the action items going forward, under which one, and with technically all under here?
Ah, yes.
And again, there's a little bit of stretch. So, for instance, like the donations, and maybe I'm wrong, I chose to improve systems and structures to create a culture. Is that correct? Yeah.
Yeah.
And so, we call, it's not data-driven teaching practices in letter V. It's not, I mean, something could be maintained in our facilities if someone donated, and it's, you know, could possibly fall under order one, but that's where I picked, and actually, the way states were working on tweaking it, the second one, the resolution for the governing board from the high school league is to cover kids that can't pay, we get like 600 bucks. So, again, I guess we felt that it would fall under that same one. Maybe we're wrong, I mean, maybe it could go under a couple of them. But that is going to be what we were, you know, kind of advised to try and do, is most things should fall under one of these four areas.
So, really, what we could say to help people understand as we're going through this is for item 1A of the improving, it would be under item 1A, under the strategic plan of improving systems, et cetera, then it is 1A, the resolutions, and 1B, the other resolution.
The two items that fall under that.
The two resolutions, yes, okay. All right.
I think it just headed strategic directions so that, you know, kind of know, kind of, because I had the same question.
Yep.
Thank you.
Yep, now I, now I get it. Yeah, I, maybe, if we could, maybe write something like that under the action, if it is, maybe putting under strategic plan, that would help me anyway, remember.
Okay, yeah, more work than not.
If you don't mind doing that.
More work than not.
Okay. 1A, resolution and acceptance of gifts, okay. Whereas school board policy 706 establishes the guidelines for the acceptance of gifts or donations to the district, whereas the International Falls School District Board encourages the support of the district's educational programs, who gives their donations that meet the goals and objectives of the school district, whereas the Minnesota statute 465.03 states the school board may accept a gift, grant, or devise of real or personal property only by the adoption of a resolution approved by two-thirds of its members. Therefore, be it resolved, the school board of International Falls Public Schools ISD 361 accepts with appreciation the following year's donations or grants received by the school district. And now, here's where we, I even made a note this time. So, I would like a motion to, for me to read these donations.
I'll move.
Okay, and then, I'm going to read these donations. Boy, am I getting good at this. It's only been a year. The following voted in favor, oh, oops, no, forget that. PCA, homecoming football game tickets, $4,000, and pallets of paper for the district, $4,000 in total. Tilsen Bay Company, 10% of clothing orders at FES, $320. Now, we're going to get into this line. H U V L Software, Bronco football boosters, $2,000, Bronco basketball boosters, $3,000, Bronco hockey boosters, $600, Bronco volleyball boosters, $800. And now, we're in Rainier Recreation Club, football cheerleading, $250, hockey cheerleading, $250. Next line is camp.
Just say O'Geechey.
O'Geechey soccer nets for Falls Elementary. Okay, now, we're going to have a motion, a second. Could I have a second for that?
I'll second.
Okay. Is there any other discussion that we're supposed to do? Okey-dokey. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Now, we're going to go to the next one, next resolution. Resolution of the board supporting Form A application in Minnesota State High School League Foundation, whereas the Minnesota State High School League Foundation was formed to provide support for Minnesota high schools' youth to participate in athletics and fine arts, whereas the governing board of ISD 361 recognizes the value of student participation in extracurricular activities, and whereas the MSHSL Foundation is offering grants and funding to assist schools in recognizing, promoting, and funding extracurricular participation by high school students in athletic and fine arts programs. Therefore, be it resolved that the governing board of ISD 361 supports the school's application to the Minnesota State High School League Foundation for a Form A grant to offset student activity fees. Now?
Just a motion and a second.
Could I have a motion for that?
So moved.
Bruce, and a second?
I'll second.
Okay, Joanne. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. All right, now?
We are at 460, four students. We were at 463 last month. We lost two preschool students, if I remember correctly. One was not ready, and the other one, I believe, was actually not old enough to be registered. And then, a first grader moved away, so we lost three kids. And then, we did just have our Walk to School Day. Mitch talked about that. That was a really big success, and it felt good to get back together with the community after we haven't been able to do that for so long. So, everything went well for there, and PCA donated fruit snacks and water, and Rainy Lake Medical Center donated granola bars for the kids. Then, of course, the 7th and 8th grade band played for us, and I donated them candy, so, for playing for us, so. And that was to support wellness and safe walks to school, safe routes to school, so. We are at Fall Picnic, which is on Wednesday, so we're so excited about that because the temperatures have just dropped severely. We might look at a September date next year. We just really wanted to get away from the spring picnic, just because there are so many things happening in the spring, it just makes it really hard. So, it probably will be an indoor picnic, which is unfortunate, but it probably would be pretty miserable if we stayed outside, so we'll see what happens. We are going to be hiring a new interventionist in the next coming weeks. Our application period is closed for that, as Brittany Foss, who was hired for our current interventionist, was hired for our new kindergarten teacher in Terry Mason's departure, so we'll get that taken care of. We just had parent-teacher conferences, and we had a good turnout for that. And then, we just recently, in September, we were able to complete all of our screening on our students with our new FastBridge software, and that was the new software we talked about for reading and math, where we would build our intervention populations from. We talked about that, and we really are talking about literacy right now, so we began our school-wide literacy intervention groups on October 10th, and so, we'll run this first round of interventions for six weeks, and then we'll progress monitor our students one time per week to make sure that our interventions are working, and if they're not working, how we need to, determine how we need to adjust those through our data meetings. And then, Katie Winkle and I are attending a virtual standards-based assessment conference, actually tomorrow and Wednesday, as part of a regional group over the, just kind of looking at standards-based report cards and what you need to do to educate families to move to that. We're not moving to standards-based report cards this year or anything, or, you know, what is that word you're saying?
Standards?
Standards, standards-based report cards, like moving away from letter grades and looking at standards. Wouldn't be anytime in the near future like this year or next year, but it really takes a lot of education for families and staff before you but it really takes a lot of education for families and staff before you can move to something like that. So we are just going to start exploring, along with the region. Um, there's many schools in the region who are already doing standards-based report cards, and there's other schools who are looking at jumping on board. So, that's what we have going on. Okay. Thank you. Uh, Tim?
Okay, our enrollment right now, we're at five twenty-four. We're down seven from last month. We're down eight from last year. Uh, end of quarter one is Wednesday, November ninth. We have completed our SEL self-screen for all students in grade six through twelve, and we're using FastBridge, um, the same software that Missy is using in the elementary, but we're only using it for the SEL component, and it's called My Savers. All students in grade six through twelve have completed the self-assessment, where they go through and answer twenty questions, on kind of their wellbeing. And now the teachers, we are in grade-level teams, and the early outs, teachers are going through, and then they are doing an evaluation called Savers for all the kids in their grade. And then we're looking at the data, comparing the two between how the students rank themselves versus how the teachers rank them, rank the student, and then coming up with interventions for students who have flagged in need of some interventions. And they're also working on interventions in academic and attendance, but the FastBridge does something new to us, and we've been utilizing that. We got some training at that October seventh workshops, so we're utilizing that, different than what Missy is at the elementary. We had parent-teacher conferences last week as well, on Monday and Wednesday. Some teachers saw a lot of parents, some not so many, and it seemed like it was dependent upon grade levels. The younger grades, there was quite a turnout, whereas the older grades, not so much. Falls parts are completing their regular season schedules this week, and then they'll be moving into playoffs next week. Um, so we're hopefully going to have some home playoff games here in the next couple of weeks, and that's all I've got from my report.
Do you know anything about why you lost those, that, what did you say, seven students?
We're down seven students. I know that we lost, I think it's, we lost three students to fifteen-day absences, and we are working with those students. Um, some have been referred to truancy court, but we are working with those students, trying to get them back in here. But we have to drop them after fifteen consecutive days of non-attendance. And we also had, I know, we had three students who never showed up at the beginning of the year, and they were still on our roster. We were carrying them, trying to find out where they were, and we have dropped them now. And we actually have to go all the way back to the first day of school to drop them, since they never came through the door the first day. So we've just kind of cleaned up. Um, it takes a while to find out students who have transferred in, or rather, transferred out. Sometimes it takes a long time to get any information in from the other schools requesting information. I know we just got some information on a student who transferred in. It came, uh, this morning, so it takes a while for that.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. First of all, um, about the extent, I'll be honest, of my technology, um, I tried taking the, the white sheet that we, we had from Teamworks and making it a little more of our own. Not to say it can't be done in a different form, and I did take and laminate it, because I guess I'm hopeful that we will keep it front and center. On the back of it is the, the piece of the desired daily experiences, um, just again, to keep in, in reference. And then I also, just per your input, um, took a, a copy of the, what's called School Board work, which we will refer to from time to time. I don't have much to go on right now. I, um, I will tell you, um, last Tuesday, uh, Tim and Missy and I had a virtual meeting with, um, Ray, and our process now of what we're doing, just so, so the board is aware, is we are taking, and, and you don't have all of this, but we have a couple of things. First of all, coming from the working group last year, there, there are nine different things we're supposed to be measuring and actually getting baseline for. And so that's part of our task for this year. And so we're going to actually meet for a little bit tomorrow and start kind of putting dates on. You know, you can't do everything at once, but figuring out what is something, you know, the first couple of things we should be tackling, if you will, um, what is something that needs to wait longer. And the second thing that we, is on our to-do list, is, um, there's what I'm going to say, district operational plan, and we need to take this now and put in what is Falls High School work, what is Falls Elementary work, and what is district work, and just kind of divide it up. And like, so for district work, for the most part, doesn't mean I do everything, but an example might be, say, we have something, and Carla's on here, so I'm just going to speak to, you know, for food service that affects the whole district, that might be district work. It's not elementary, it's not high school, it's district work. We could have something like with maintenance that maybe covers the whole thing. Those are going to be things that are on, let me say, the district plan. Now, there could be something like FastBridge, SEL at the high school, it's on Tim's plan, it's not on district plan necessarily, it's not on Missy's. Missy might have dis, you know, um, FastBridge with the literacy piece. So, so that is our next thing of pieces we're working on individually. It is really, again, going to help us achieve these things down the years, so to speak. So, that's where we're at.
How much of this is on the website?
This is, none of this is put on yet. I'm trying to get it, like you say, and it, for the most part, these two things are what is going to go on. Okay? And, and that is really, and it's a little different than in the past, but that's what they say is your strategic plan.
So the roadmap is going to go on, and the desired daily experiences are?
There might be one other piece, but for the most part, the rest of it is working stuff behind the scenes. You know, um, what's district work, what's Falls High School work, what's Falls Elementary work, will be reported out, you know, from time to time as we go on what we're doing. Um, but it's not technically, you know, a big laundry list, if you will, on the website. The same thing with those things that we're looking at, and again, it's variety of things. There's ways of monitoring, um, uh, interaction with the public in the school. Obviously, now the COVID is, it's not done, but we're allowing people back in. That was one of the things that came out of the groups, and so we have a, a way we're going to do that. It's going to take most of the year to get some baseline depth. You know, I can't tell you that we have, I'm just picking, four people a day that come in and interact and volunteer or work with, you know, we really don't know where, you know, on certain days, like, this is picnic, yeah, that would throw, I mean, you can't count that. I mean, that's a different situation, but we're looking at involvement with, you know, volunteers, people coming in and reading the classes, or, you know, a group coming in and presenting to, you know, ninth grade or whatever. So throughout the year, we're going to monitor, and then we're supposed to, injuries to come, how can we improve, how can we up that number? You know, it's more important. That's just one of the examples. So, um, yep.
If this goes on the website, is it possible to make it, like, maybe even where you could click on these, you could read them better?
If we can find someone to, I mean, I don't know, I mean, I'll be honest, I'll have to work with, see if we can find someone. This, this document is the design of them. I mean, I can take it apart and, you know.
It's just accessibility-wise, that's pretty hard for a lot of people to read, you know, on their phones, for instance, or?
Any other option, yeah. I'll, I'll see what I can come up with, or we'll put it on, you know, like, three different pages, you know, where it's, I guess.
Any good looks like this, but yeah, I mean, click on this one, you'd get just that page or something. So, just something that would make it a little easier.
Yeah, I'll see what I can come up with.
Because I think there's a lot of good information on that, but it is hard to, to young people like it.
Any other questions, just on that piece right now?
Thank you.
Okay, yep. Um, several other things. Uh, uh, there was a question, and again, I'm just giving it to everyone. Um, we are tracking, we still look at, um, like I said, COVID is not done, gone, away. Um, everyone has different opinions. From the beginning of the school year, um, the elementary has had twenty-one students out, okay? Currently, and this was as of this morning before school started, so it could have changed today. There were two kids out, whatever, what, uh, VSS nineteen cleared, meaning the cases are gone or they're back with masks on or whatever. Um, Falls High School has had, um, well, this morning there were zero off, but it's had thirty-seven cases. So roughly six weeks, um, you know, six, seven a week. Um, and then I didn't go back and look, there are times it's more. Um, as far as staff goes, we've had nineteen staff out. Um, so, I mean, that's a higher percentage. You know, there's a lot less staff than there are, but, um, and again, I'll be honest, myself being one of them, uh, like, our office must have lost five, six people, and, you know, I mean, it went through a, a group of us, assuming they'll pass it to each other, but maybe we didn't, I don't know. Um, so that's where we're at right now. Um, is there flu and other things going around? Yeah, there definitely is. And, you know, and so our stances, you know, if you're setting, come to school, we want encouraging people to test. We have tests available. We're not, um, for the most part, we don't have a person testing every week or every two weeks like we had for part of the year last year, but we do have take-home tests if anyone wants. And again, the state is providing. So, just throwing it out there, they're available.
You don't have the nurses testing, right?
I'm not going to say they go.
Nurse assigned to PCR.
But like, we hired a physician last year that was in the elementary and at high school certain days. We don't have that. Okay. Um, just giving you a heads up on the, the payroll position. Um, we, they did do interviews about two weeks ago. They offered it to two people, both turned it down. Um, and I'm going to be honest, not enough money. That's, that was the response from both of them. So it is out there, reposted again. What we hadn't done is we didn't have the starting rate on there. It's twenty dollars and sixty, sixty-six cents. Um, comes out roughly forty-three thousand for the two thousand eighty hours. I don't know, if we don't get someone, um, we're going to have to have serious conversation. Um, and just being honest, you, you know, that's.
Waiters, pre-pandemic and post-pandemic are bonkers, no?
Well, correct.
I'm not saying that it's a bad thing, you know, just in general, I've seen it all across the board.
All I can tell you is, I, and again, the staff, obviously Stacy is one of them, but Michelle's working hard, Kendra has stepped up. She's getting better. She can't run payroll yet. Um, she's supposed to be the, you know, the helper that is running various positions. She's mainly running payroll now, and she'll get there. Um, it's just, it's draining. We got to find someone. Um, or I may be stepping in and doing some, and, and just being honest, you, you know, um, you can only work fifty-five, sixty hours a week for so many weeks. Um, and so, we'll see.
Is there anything that we can do to make the job, uh, more attractive, from what I hear on national news, that, uh, honestly, people like to work from home? Is there anything we can do?
I don't know. I mean, I'm not saying you can't, but you got to think bigger picture, because what happens is when you start having these conversations, and it affects one, we're going to have others. You, you know, and, and I'll be honest with you, I spoke with, um, he's retired now, I don't know how many of you know, John Ingleking, was a proctor, retired super as of last year. And I, 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 I've worked with him quite a bit. I respect him very much. And so I happened to be having a conversation with him about two weeks ago, and I just threw it at him. I said, what's like, you know, prior to retirement, at the end of last year, I said, down there, you struggling to get employees, you know, was Proctor Herman Towne, dude? And he said, darn right. He, and he, and he said, I'm not saying this is right. We had several turnover in their business department. I don't know how big Proctor is. I didn't, you know, have asked. I mean, it's, it's bigger than we are. But he said, one of the last things he did is, is he put five grand on every business office position, because he said, we had turnover several times. And he said, you just can't have it. You can't, you, you know, and I, same in business, you, you know, can't get a, train, train someone in, and, you know, a year later, lose them. And so, I don't know. I'm not saying we have to go there yet, but we're going to have to look at something because we, we need, we need another body. And, um, and obviously, you don't want to get someone for three months, four months. Can't guarantee that, but.
That's also a, that spot where people won't move to a town necessarily for that type of wage.
Well, the other thing, just so you're aware, we checked with the, the hospital, and we checked with the city, you know, to see. And again, they're not comparable necessarily, apples are apples, but they're in the ballpark. I mean, you know, it's, it's just not, it's not enough for people to dump and ship, you know, so to speak, and go on, hey, that's an upgrade, you know, or, you know, it's a step. So.
What do, what do you mean by that? Are, is comparable to the mail?
Yeah, you know, the, we, we checked with several schools when we're in line, but, but we also checked with someone at the hospital. And again, I'm not picking on it, even with just reacting contacts, and, um, the hospital and with the city, to see how does a payroll person, because that's mainly what this job, they do some, and it's in the ballgame, or they start.
In the ballpark, okay, for salary.
Well, for, yeah, for salary wage, it's an hourly, um, and, and obviously goes up to twenty-five, thirteen an hour, if you, you know, stay enough years. But, um, it's a challenge, and, and not just a challenge here, but I just throw it out because I may be reaching out to some people in the next few weeks if something doesn't change, to say, hey, can we put our heads together, you know, how we solve this?
The tough part is, is what I found, um, and definitely with the business office, is if this person was working forty hours a week and they were good at their job, those forty hours a week don't disappear, you know. So like, that work's still there, and then that's when stuff just starts going bad, you know.
And, and that's, that's the problem. We've pushed the audit back, um, a couple of times now, because Stace is doing payroll a good chunk. They're doing, uh, insurance removal right now. And again, Kendra's great, Mark's helped a little bit the couple of days she's in. Michelle has a full job. She's taken on some additional stuff as well, trying to, you know, maintain. But, um.
Well, I think that's the important piece when we start talking about wages, et cetera, for, uh, business staff. People would love to discuss teacher, adding teachers and that kind of thing. But on the other hand, if we don't have a business department to run the school, we're going to be in dire straits, so.
Anyway, I'm just giving you an update. That's where we're at. It, it's open for next Monday. Um, I didn't check if we have any new applicants or not, um, just giving you a heads up. And the last thing I want to just, um, plant a seed again. Obviously, my ca, castric was here, I think it was la, last month. Um, Officer Vallejo, um, has been here working, is great. We had an issue last week with a, a girl that, um, has medical issues a couple of days in a row, actually. It was great having her here. Um, but what Mike did, call and let me know, is they have an opening coming up. And he has a concern that, um, the person may take the full-time gig, not knowing, um, what's going to happen with the resource officer down the road. And I said, I'm supportive, and, and I can have Tim and Missy talk, but it's something we need to think about down the road, that are, are we going to, and again, we're not in budget time right now, but moving forward, is it anything we want to entertain or not? Um, because it, it's only fair to, I think, Josh, as well as the city, you know, if we think we're going to go down that road or not, and if we're not, I said, obviously Josh needs to do what's best for Josh, and just being honest. Um, on the flip side, if we think something we may entertain, and what I'm getting at is paying for part of it, you know, they're not asking for a hundred percent, but they're also not sure if the city can, they're going to do a hundred percent for this year. You know, that's, Mike wanted to try it, and they're trying it. But on the other hand, he said, I don't know if we can do a hundred percent for that. So.
Do you want to have a discussion right now about that?
Well, no, it's not. I mean, we can talk about it, um, but it's in the infancy stage, and if we want, like you say, yeah, we can talk about, you know, down the road.
I, I think it's valuable. I mean, I, he's been here, you know, not very long even so far, and has proven, you know, to be valuable in different situations, um, that we've had already. And I, I think it's great. I, I'm, I'm all for it to keep him here.
Right. I, I, I guess I'm, I'm for, I've always been for it. It's just can't wait for that, so.
Yeah, and I'd say that the, that I'm in favor as well. So.
When it came up, I remember just kind of wanting to know more of what, you know, it was, I felt like at the time that it came up, it was vague. You ran out of person in the building, you're not sure what it's going to be shaped like. I feel like it should fit in somewhere here with some objective understanding of what's the job role, what's his, you know, is he going to build community? Is he building, is it for safety only? Is, you know, like, what are the hours? And what is, you know, I mean, what if he gets pulled away? What would he get pulled away for? What is, you know what I mean? So.
To be honest, it's still vague, because for the most part, like I say, you know, this is there, we welcome it in, but he's still learning, he's still, I don't know, he's been in training yet. You know, Mike has him scheduled for some different things on, you know, like Al's training, also some, you know, working with youth and stu, you know, resource officer. I mean, like I say, it's, there's a lot, and that's what Mike is concerned, you know, it's just like we're talking about. You train someone, and you work with someone, and get, you know, capacity built, get some things going, and all of a sudden, you know, a guaranteed full-time position comes open, he may jump to where if there is, you know, I, we're interested in doing this, a commitment, he thinks Josh is a hundred percent committed to this. He just, you know, um, and, and so far, I don't know if Tim or Mr. wants to say anything. I mean, it's, um, you know.
I guess the, I mean, if you're, if you're creating a new position anywhere, you'd want to, I mean, say, if these are the three, I mean, if Al's training is priority, then that would be put on, so that.
then that would be put on so that the next person knows that's what they would be getting, you know. I feel like that, I feel like there must be a way that either what's worked at other schools, or what is a resource officer, there must be some fundamentals of like what a resource officer should be. Because let's say five years from now, we still have a resource officer, we don't have it very well defined, and then it's just a person that, and not, not that it's a bad person, and again, it can be very valuable, but what is the value, and how do we, you know, measure it? In case we do have to, like, say, okay, is this program, can we invest in this program or that program? We can then compare them a little bit more objectively, you know, in what they offer. So, if it feels, and even if it's just a sense of security, there's some value in that, but maybe there are some other pieces that we could shape. Partnership with Kate, or certain activities that they, you know, are present for, whether it's games, or, you know, extra things, or just during the school day. Those, understanding that better seems like it'd be valuable to us going forward.
I was just thinking, like, certainly Jen is right, we need to define something naturally, and align it with our mission. I, I would say that I'm happy that this officer is working out, and that I, when, I initially thought it'd be hugely dependent on the officer that you get, and that is still a concern of mine, on how that happens, like, let's say we... Because I'm in support of doing something, I don't know if I'll be here when we do it, but I'm in support of doing something. And, and is it going to be dependent on this officer? That's probably not what the police department wants. They probably would like to be able to put in other officers, I'm guessing? Or will it, would we have a say in who this is in the future, especially if we have a financial stake in it?
Well, my, my understanding, again, obviously, just down to what Mike and I's conversation have been, both are a hundred percent adamant, it does depend on who the person is, how, I'm just going to say how good or how well it works. You know, there are officers, just like there's teachers, that are better at certain things than others. It's not something he wants to force someone into, you know, you want to, you want someone that wants to work with you. They want the, I'm going to say, different line of work, so to speak. Not to say it isn't safety or protection, but there's a lot more. On the flip side, they aren't dealing with the same thing that the officer on the street is necessarily. It's just different, so, point being is, it would be an opt-out clause. You're not stuck in it, it's a contract just like anything. That if for some reason, this officer left, we would not necessarily have the right to say who comes in, but we would have the right to communicate if it's not working. We can get out of the contract, I don't know if it's, he, he gave me an example of a, a contract, I don't remember if it was sixty days or ninety days, you know, out, you know. There, there are options to get out, not what we want, or not what he wants. But, things happen, and if you get someone that's not the right...
You'd end up with like a good cop that's a grumpy, you know, like that's...
Yeah, and, you know, this person, like, like he says, Josh is, again, we're not scheduling him, but he's been at dances, you know, been at some of the extracurricular activities, you know, he's been at different things, you know, some days he's here at eight in the morning, other days he might come in at ten or eleven, because he went and, you know, was at the volleyball game last night. You know, his flexibility, which, which is, I think, a hundred percent fine. There's times he wants to get over to the elementary a little more, as things, you know, settle in, do some things with them, you know, it has some flexibility. But, and not saying he's at every, you know, not going to be at every activity necessarily. He can't be at every D, some Ds or activity, but that's the piece of all people relationships, it is.
Yeah, I would wonder about, so we would not be able to interview the person?
I'm not saying...
And pick the person?
I mean, for the most part, he is employed by the City of International Falls. So, we typically would not...
Please, I not pay them?
No, but I don't think we would have a right, I mean, like I say, I think if it was a good person this go around... And, and like you're saying, it is very dependent, and, and that's the point of, you know, that Mike's bringing it up, that he knows there's no pay coming up, and tell me when. And he would like to know, you know, he's got to make a decision. He's also talking with the city to see what commitment, you know, he can get from them. Because they're looking, you know, they're looking at budgets and stuff, because he wants, Josh thinks it's going well in here, but on the other hand, if the city goes, hey, we, we can't pay for a hundred percent of people, you know. He wants to know, you know, can we get, you know, can, I don't know, who knows? We're, we're just talking, and so, I will give more info, I'm, what I'm going to call more of like a job description of some things, again, it's going to be flexible, because things are going to change. I'm not going to say, just like I spoke with a high school crew, I'm not saying we're going to do Alice Training or not. He's going to learn more about it, and we're going to figure out if it's something we want to do.
What training?
It's called Alice, it's, it's a, it's a resp-, I don't know what it stands for, but it's a response to a crisis situation. But again, it may be something we do or maybe won't. You know, he's definitely going to be part of our incident response planning and things like that. And where it goes, what else he does, he's learning along with us to a certain spot. But, he is interacting with kids, making relationships, helping with some situations that we've had. And being honest, I'm the least involved with him for the most part. I mean, Tim and Lisa West in the front office, who he's now working with kids.
Yeah, I think that's what it should be, but I would say this, that if we, if we make the commitment financially, I, I would expect that law enforcement would make that kind of a commitment as well. And in the event that an officer would move out, or change positions or whatever, then law enforcement would be prepared to deal with that situation, you know, as, as part of their partnership with us.
You mean as a replacement?
Yes, yeah, yeah, because, yeah, I mean, obviously, that can happen, probably will. And in situations that I've been involved with, it has, I've seen as many as four different officers. And again, some are better than others, but it goes, if, if there's a good partnership, with great communication, things go pretty well usually.
And, and that's all, and like I said, we're not, there's nothing in action, I'm just giving you a heads up, and we'll get some information, and we'll keep the conversation going. And like you say, I'm going to say it's no different than, you know, we commit to it, we figure out how to do it, it's not necessarily in budget time right now, but it's just like coming to you and saying, hey, we need another bus, you know, or figure out how to pay for it, you know, and that would be this, you know, and it can, can be some tough decisions, but it's going to be one of those that we commit to, and not say you commit to it forever. But, you figure out how to pay for it for the coming year, and, and so far, I think it's been a good thing, because it's not paying forward, so we'll keep the conversation going.
Kevin?
Yep.
Maybe sometime it would be helpful to have just either you, or Lisa, or Tim, or, or the officer kind of explain what has already shaped his day. I know he's been very helpful in situations that pop up, but what are both the days that there is anything that pops up? What does he do with his time? How is it structured, how would you pull him, pull him in? Like, what's already happening, that would be helpful, because it's clear that you guys are really seeing the value of it, are not in the building, so I don't, you know, but it'd be good to hear that, if that's something.
Yep.
And I think that is all I have, unless you have a question?
Well, I have a comment about, we, we went through the COVID part pretty quickly, and I, I just wanted to say that, you know, from what I understand, science is saying that even though, that number one, COVID is, is a whole lot less, that we are very lucky now to have all the testing and the medications, and we're in a different place now with COVID. And I, you know, I'm glad that we can go without masks and all those kind of things. Life is moving ahead now, and I know that we, from what my studying of it is, is that some of the knowledgeable scientists and doctors are saying that they, they see it as a little different than, like, other viruses and things in that more often, if, if kids come in, that they can still be, they can have organ damage and that kind of thing. Does it happen as, it happens more often than a, than a chicken pox or anything like that, but we're so very lucky to be in a new place in our school. And I think that it's important to recognize that as things change, we change. As we had to move with masks, we don't have to have masks now. And I just think it's really something good in our, in our lives, but we just have to be just a little leery of it, not a whole lot afraid of it right now. I just like to recognize that, so. Okay, now, meeting reminder, campus meeting on Monday, November fourteenth to five fifteen at the high school, and that's only about fifteen minute meeting, right?
It's probably a five minute meeting.
Five minute meeting to go through the results of the elections. I didn't have that on my calendar, but I'll put it on, and...
Beth is taking a, actually taking an exam for our community education classes, so she gave us her report, if I'm just going to...
Yes, so you're going to read it?
It's attached, and do you want me to read it?
You may, go ahead, read it, so can you hear it?
Okay, in September, we have following courses, driver's training, defensive driving, firearm safety, and we had a session of water aerobics. All were, all were very well attended, water aerobics will continue into October, and we'll, and we'll start another session in November. ECFE and community education will be hosted at Haunted Hallway. Mitch talked about that on October twenty-seventh, from six to seven. We have twelve community partners that will have tables set up in the hallway to hand out treats to our ECFE kindergarten preschool and Head Start kiddos. We are excited to offer a college prep course in November. It will be the evening of November second, and Falls High grad Kim Hopelt will be conducting the course. This course will help students navigate the col-, navigate the college, and help answer questions that parents, guardians may have. Our adults with disability, the PALS program is running strong, activities are well attended, and Angela Scholler has been a great addition to the team. Community education, they are down room one eighteen again, the space is brighter and seems to be working very well, both Angela and I are happy with our new space. Community education will be working with 4H to provide some more after-school youth programming, and we're all community involved, so...
So, is the community head office not in the back of the building anymore? And there, what is in that space, nothing?
Right now, nothing.
Okay.
I mean, there are some stuff stored, but it is non-use space.
So, if you want to drop off a registration fee or registered, go to the front door, and then it's in room, like, one eighteen is where the offices, okay. All right, sounds good. Committee reports, any others? Okay, committee advisory board, that...
They did B-type, she doesn't have anything in there.
Okay, rep commission?
We did, we did meet today, Kevin and Betty, and Phil Mason, and Tony Paul, and myself. It was very informative, it was a nice breakdown of the finances, the assets, where they all lay as far as with the school or with the city, and there's good discussion. I think we're moving closer, getting closer to a, a decision as to whether it's going to stay a partnership as we know it, or whether it's going to differently, a couple of different people. The school takes their portion, and the city takes their portion, and oversee those things differently a little bit, but I think Kevin and Betty are doing a nice job together, communicating on their needs and their focus and their vision and so on. We don't have a definite date as of yet.
And we're still waiting, there's some...
There's some pieces that...
Inchpins or whatever, you could, you know, rock it one way or the other, but it's moving, you know, the investigation.
Yeah, I think, yeah, it's moving, moving forward, so that's, that's the latest on that.
Okay, and I think it's so important for us to recognize, especially for people who haven't had a lot of involvement in sports, to, to know that, I mean, as teachers, we've always been trained, that sports is a, is an important part of a student's education, and helps with some students to stay in school, those who may not have stayed in school had it not been for sports. And so, I think it's important at times for us to recognize the importance of sports as well as academics.
And I'm just going to caveat that extracurricular, because again, speech...
Extracurricular.
And I mean, again, I, I say sports in the majority of the time too, but it's more than that. I mean, you know, there's these extras that are right to keep a kid coming just because of that. I can remember that is sometimes the case.
Right, okay, all right. Is there any other discussion about anything else? No? Okey-dokey. Motion to adjourn?
Aye.
Second? You want it? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried, vote carry.